Welcome everyone to Elizabeth Town City Council's Special Meeting for September 22nd, 2025. And I'd like to ask Councilman Lamar Jones if he'd lead us in the indication, please.
Let's break. Dear Father, Lord, thank you so much for letting us give us the opportunity, Lord, to live in this great community, Lord. Thank you for our great employees that we have work with this city, Lord. We just thank you that they keep this man cogging our way of turning every day, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for the blessings you've restored us, Lord. Lord, as we go through this meeting tonight, as you give us the knowledge and decisions we need to make to keep this city moving in the right direction, Lord. Lord, thank you especially for our first responders, our military, especially those on the home, Lord, yes, you lift them up in special way, Lord, watch over them. Lord, again, thank you for the opportunities and blessings you give us every day in this city. We ask this in your great name. Amen.
Amen.
Do you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will get started with approval of minutes from September 15th, 2025. If I can get a motion in a second, please.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Judge Howard, we will start with you. Second reading by motion of ordinance number 23, 2025, setting tax rate for all motor vehicles and watercraft. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Judge Howard.
Be ordained by the city of Elizabeth Town that from and after the passage, approval and publication of this ordinance as follows: that an ad valorem tax of 11.6 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation of all motor vehicles and water crafts taxable for municipal purposes in the city be in the same as hereby levied as of January 1, 2026, for the purpose of raising revenue, to pay salaries of officers and employees of the city, to pay for repairs and maintenance of streets and public ways, the public and other property of the city, to pay for lighting the streets, the maintenance and operation of the fire and police departments, and all other proper and legal demands against the city. Said tax shall be collected by the Harden County Clerk. This ordinance shall be effective only after its adoption, publication, and posting as provided by law. Be it further ordained that the mayor and/or his designate is authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this ordinance. It was read for the first time on the 15th day of September, and this is a second reading and therefore is available for your consideration.
Any discussion? Need a motion in a second to adopt, please.
Motion.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaacs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Springsteen?
Yes.
And Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carries. Six oh, thank you. Ordinance 24, 2025, setting franchise tax rate on all eligible bank deposits. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Judge Howard.
Be ordained by the city of Elizabeth Town that from and after the passage, approval and publication of this ordinance as follows: one, there is hereby imposed on all financial institution as defined by KRS Chapter 136, located within the city for the 2025 tax year, a franchise tax at the rate of 0.025% on all eligible deposits as defined by KRS Chapter 136, maintained by such financial institution. Two, that all taxes hereby levied shall become due and payable as provided by law, together with special levies heretofore made for street improvements. If any tax bill is not paid on or before January 1st of 2026, the said tax bill shall be declared delinquent and shall bear interest at the rate of 6% per annum or one-half of 1% per month or fraction thereof until paid. In addition, a penalty of 10% of the amount of tax for general purposes and special assessments shall be added to said bill and collected being the penalty for non-payment when due. It is further ordained that in the event any such tax bill shall be paid during the month of October of 2025 or November of 2025, a 2% discount shall be allowed by the Elizabeth Town Director of Finance. Be it further ordained that the mayor and/or his designate is authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order. This was first read on the 15th day of September of 2025, and as a second reading, it is also now available for your consideration.
Any discussion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Isaacs?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Springsteen?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Ordinance 25, 2025, setting 2025 tax rate for real and personal property. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Judge Howard.
Be it ordained by the city of Elizabeth Town that from and after the passage, approval and publication of this ordinance as follows: one, that an ad valorem tax of 10.7 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation of all real estate and tangible personal property taxable for municipal purposes in the city be in the same as hereby levied for the purpose of raising revenue, to pay salaries of officers and employees of the city, to pay for repairs and maintenance of streets and public ways, and public and other property of the city, to pay for lighting of the streets, the maintenance and operation of the fire and police departments, and all other proper and legal demands against the city. Two, that all taxes hereby levied shall become due and payable on December 1st of 2025 as provided by law, and if any tax bill is not paid by December 31st of 2025, said tax bill be declared delinquent and shall owe a penalty of 5% if paid by January 31st of 2026. In addition, a penalty of 21% of the amount of tax will be owed for bills paid after January 31st of 2026. Additional penalties and interest will accrue once the Harden County Sheriff's Office transfers delinquent tax bills to the Harden County Clerk as required by KRS Chapter 134. General purposes and special assessments shall be added to said bill and collected being the penalty for non-payment when due. Three, that a discount of 2% shall be allowed on that portion of the tax bill for general purposes if paid by November 30th of 2025. Four, that the ad valorem tax bill will be mailed by first class to the property owner as of January 1st of 2025 as provided by the Harden County Property Valuation Administrator. Five, that the payment of the ad valorem tax bill can be received by mail at the Harden County Sheriff's Office at the address of 150 North Provident Way, Suite 105, Elizabeth Town, Kentucky 42701, or in person at the Harden County Government Building at the same address. This ordinance shall be effective only after its adoption, publication, and posting as provided by law. Be it further ordained that the mayor and/or his designate is authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this ordinance. This ordinance was read for the first time on September the 15th. This is a second reading and is also now available for your consideration.
So fun fact, I had Mrs. Graham do a little research, and she looked up all of the rates on real property tax, and I think we went all the way back to 1919, but it was formulated different until 1983, I believe. And so since 1983, the city council has either voted to maintain the percentage that they had the previous year or decreased it every single year. They have never gone up since 1983. I thought that was pretty interesting. So the whole time you and Tony have been here, you've never raised...
I think that trend started before us, Tony.
I'm not saying y'all were 83, but you weren't long after us. But anyway, I thought that was interesting. Any discussion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Isaacs?
Aye.
Jones?
Yes.
Springsteen?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Quick one. Okay, Mrs. Graham, if you'll forgive me, I am going to reverse the order on the municipal orders and have Judge Howard read Municipal Order 56, 2025, Accepting Proposal for Naming Rights for the Historic State Theater. If I can get a motion in a second to read.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Judge Howard.
And a special meeting of the city council held on the date set out below. After first being read, a motion to adopt the following municipal order was duly made, seconded, and approved. Whereas the city owns the Historic State Theater in downtown Elizabeth Town, and whereas the city restored the property as a venue for movies, concerts, meetings, weddings, and other public events, and whereas the city solicited proposals for the naming rights to the gallery space, which is part of the Historic State Theater complex, and whereas the city received two proposals, which were publicly opened on June the 12th of this year and reviewed. Now be it ordered, the city accept the bid from Magnolia Bank for the naming rights to the gallery within the Historic State Theater complex for a five-year period at in an annual amount of $20,100. Be it further ordered that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign any and all agreements, contracts, and other documents to complete this arrangement. Be it further ordered that the mayor or his designate is authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order, read, adopted, and approved the 22nd day of September.
Any discussion? Need a motion in a second to adopt, please.
Salute.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now Judge Howard, if you would kindly read Municipal Order Number 55, 2025, Accepting Proposal for Sale of 710 and 712 East Dixie Avenue. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Salute. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Judge Howard.
And a special meeting of the city council on the date held set out here below. After first being read, a motion to adopt the following municipal order was duly made, seconded, and approved. Whereas the city acquired property at 710 and 712 East Dixie Avenue in August of 2021, and whereas the city acquired the property to make the property available for redevelopment purposes and has now determined that it is no longer in the public interest to retain ownership of the property at 710 and 712 East Dixie Avenue, so that the property may be developed by a private business as was intended by the purchase of the property. And whereas the city solicited proposals or bids for the purchase and development of this property by issuing a request for proposals by advertising on the city's webpage and posting a sign on the property for two weeks, notifying the public the property was for sale. And whereas the city received multiple telephone inquiries and one proposal or bid, which was publicly opened on September 12th of 2025 and reviewed. And whereas the city followed these procedures to comply with KRS Chapter 82 and its own policy for property sales. Now be it ordered, the city accept the bid or proposal from Dewey and Kelly Cruz doing business as Cruz Properties LLC for the sale of approximately .76 acres at 710 and 712 East Dixie Avenue for $190,000, and that the city convey the property to that entity free from all liens for transfer and development purposes. Be it further ordered that the mayor is authorized to sign any and all agreements, contracts, settlements, statements, deeds, subdivision plans, and other documents to complete this property transfer, including preparation of a current property boundary survey and a Phase 1 environmental assessment report. Be it further ordered that the mayor and/or his designate is authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order, read, adopted, and approved the 22nd day of September.
Any discussion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. And at this time, I would like to introduce you to Dewey and Kelly Cruz, who are apparently the new owners of that property. And Dewey, if you would, like to get up and speak and talk a little bit about what your plans are. We'd love to hear it. Oh, yeah, and family. I didn't mean to... Yeah, if you don't care. I thought Noah was gonna do it, but I guess he's...
Noah said, "R, you forced me to."
Lauren would do it.
Mayor Gregory and City Council, good afternoon, and thank you for your support and your encouragement today. Your leadership, your vision, your commitment, and the support of not only Deucers, but our small businesses in our community are to be commended. We're excited to explore our family's dreams and vision of what is next for Deucers Homemade Ice Cream and Bakery. We anticipate that people will ask what our plans are and what our timeframe is, but unfortunately, we cannot tell you or answer any of those questions right now. But what we can tell you is that we are going to make our decisions on what is needed, not only for our business, but for our community, and that our children are going to help make a lot of those decisions.
Amen.
And they don't really know all of that yet, but it will come. Our oldest daughter, Jordan, lives in North Carolina, and she's a graduate of Elizabeth Town High School, but she and her husband moved to Mount Airy, North Carolina, and is raising our three grandchildren there. But even though she's in North Carolina, she continues to be our business consultant and can usually bring Dewey down to some of his thoughts, and she creates our work schedules. Our son Noah, at 15 years old, when COVID kinda changed our business a little bit, we asked him if he would start producing our ice cream. I can tell you that Noah just turned 21 years old last month and is doing a fantastic job of leading and doing that production. It's kinda made our business stand out a little bit with some local and state awards, and then he's also overseeing our two mobile units that we have. In 2021, our then 23-year-old daughter, Lauren, moved to our head baker. I think our granny would be very proud of her for the commitment that she's done in that and with her creations and her baking and her decorating for some of our most delicious desserts here in our community, and we are very proud of that, too. So thank you. Lauren and Noah have done a tremendous job in their roles at Deucers, and we can honestly say that because of their consistent products produced, we have had many partnership opportunities, our catering opportunities, our wholesale opportunities, and that we're very proud of, we're very selective with. But we're also, that has led us to a growing business that we probably did not anticipate 10 years ago when we started. So our legacy at Deucers is not just for our children, but for our community, and we look forward to seeing and cheering on all the other establishments that are coming to the area, the south end of town. And once again, thank you, and we look forward to our next adventure.
I would like, and it's humbling, it is very humbling for us. I was in youth ministry when I started this. Rick Davis came to me and said, "I think you need to make an extra $10,000." So I bought the ice cream trailer from him. Now he wants a check from me every month because of what's going on. But I know Rick. But it blows our mind, it blows our mind of how the community has come around us. But we've got a great community, and we're excited. We live on that side of town. Some of you all probably do, too. We're excited about that side of town and what that has to offer for us in Elizabeth Town and surrounding counties. And I do appreciate this opportunity. Our family appreciates this opportunity. And Deucers, our goal is, every time, is to be better, to be better than what we are now and to grow. And that's our focus. There's a lot of times we come back together after a weekend. What can we do better in service? I mean, I want to touch all five senses, and that's what we've always tried to do. I appreciate the opportunity, and thank you again. Yes.
Noah, I was giving you a chance.
Mayor, if I could, this family has been a blessing to this community long before Deucers even came around, and they continue to do so today. And they've got an excellent product, but they're also outstanding people. And I don't know of a time that a community event or something hasn't needed something, that they haven't tried to work with them. And I remember Deucers was one of our first vendors down at Fairgrounds. And back when it was a slimmer time down there, and they hung with us, and so we're so appreciative of that. And we've been able to grow together from that event to your own business. And the product that you all produce speaks volumes about you all and the care that you all have, not only for the product, but for the community. So thank you. It's exciting when you can see a local business expand and have another opportunity here in the community. So thank you.
And it is our kids an opportunity to put their feet down to your role.
Yes.
Yes.
And many of you all are probably wondering where 710 and 712 East Dixie is. If you can picture right beside the new firehouse down there on the south end of town where the omelet house used to be, that was property that was owned by another local businessman. And if you'll recall, when we built the new firehouse in 2020, 1920, then we traded property for the old firehouse. We traded even for the property that Deucers is eventually going to go on, on the south end. And we didn't know at the time why we were, when we knew why we were trading, we didn't know what was gonna end up going there. But it's always great when you can hold property or you can have some inventory that when something pops up like this, you can make it happen and work a deal, and it couldn't have fallen into place better. And I think Councilman Ferguson said it best. They were a great family and contributors to this community long before they ever started making ice cream. So we're really proud to be able to work with them and continue to grow not only our community, the south end, but just everything that's great about Elizabeth Town. So thank you all very much.
There is a rumor they're working a deal for a discount for fire department, so that means Steve Thompson is gonna want a location by the intersection.
We have rumors to do additions. The mayor may be able to comment.
You're saying there's a mobile unit opportunity over there?
No, permit.
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 Okay, public comments. City Council Information Items, October 6th, 2025, meeting will be canceled due to fall break. So our next meeting will be October 13th, 2025, and don't forget coming this Saturday, the Heartland Harvest Festival. Beth, where you and Priscilla want to jump up and talk about that real quick?
Sure.
Not to put you on the spot, but I'm putting you on the spot.
So the weather looks perfect. I know it's gonna rain the rest of the week, but we have been checking, and the weather looks really, really fantastic. So of course, yes, as Jeff said, Saturday, September 27th, is the Heartland Harvest Festival. If you all remember last year, Hurricane Helene kind of rained on our parade, and so we had to cancel all of our events. But we're back. I think we're bigger than ever for this year. There's a lot of community events that will happen throughout the day and some downtown events. So some of our community events, I'll let Priscilla talk about those.
We have so many things going on in our community. I mean, it's really gonna be hard for everyone to choose. We're kicking off the morning, of course, with the Women's Club of Elizabeth Town's breakfast here at Pritchard from 8:00 to 11:00. Tickets can be bought in advance for that or at the door, and we are really looking forward to that great breakfast. And then heading on over to the nature park, we have the Heartland Harvest 5K. And you don't have to be an avid runner for that. If you want to just walk and enjoy that beautiful scenery, we just invite everyone to go out there and participate. We have a free kids' fishing derby from 9:00 to noon, and you can check in there at the bandstand. And then we have the Ron Thomas Memorial Fishing Tournament. You can pre-register for that online, heartlandharvestfest.com. But all of those proceeds are going to WHAS Crusade for Children. That one is being sponsored by our Elizabeth Town Fire Department in conjunction with the Central Harden High School's Bass Fishing Team. So we're really looking forward to that as well. And then if you have a classic or current year, a late year Corvette, then we are hosting a Corvette Cruisin' over at Southeast Christian Church from 10:00 to 2:00, and that's a really great activity as well. They're gonna have some food trucks, and all the proceeds are going to local charity as well. And I think Beth will talk about our day.
And we also want to thank the Parks and Rec Department. They are the ones that are working with the 5K and for the fishing derby. So we want to appreciate those people. Seth and his team do a fantastic job supporting us in our roles. The downtown events, they start at 10:00 on Saturday morning. So we'll have over 100 craft vendors, businesses downtown lining Dixie and Mulberry. So you can bring your, I would say checkbook, but I don't think people take checks anymore. Bring your card, your cash, your shopping bag, your wagon. There'll be something for everybody. We'll also have food trucks in the city hall parking lot. And one of the things that we love about our downtown event is free. So we'll have a free kid zone. We've got four of our area churches that are coming together that are going to be working with us and operating that. So we're really excited and appreciate them. I think it's Grace Heartland, Severance Valley, no, Southeast, First Christian, and Severance Valley. So we appreciate those folks for supporting our community event. So we'll have kids' inflatables, lots of games, a petting zoo. All of that is free. So if you have kids, grandkids, just let everybody know. It's a gift from the city to the community, and we're really fortunate that we can do that at no charge for the kids. The big event that we're looking forward to is the concert event. And so while the downtown events go on from 10:00 to 5:00, we'll open up that concert event area at 2:00, and that will be in the Justice Center parking lot, similar to where we had our block party. We've got food vendors on site. We'll have lots of refreshments that you can purchase. Of course, all of the downtown businesses will also be serving that day. So we're encouraging folks to, you know, if they don't see something at a food truck, visit one of our downtown businesses. They'll have something for you to eat and drink. But we kick off the day at 2:30 with the Cleverly's. If you haven't heard of them, they are fantastic. They're known all across, I would say, the world, but they're really fantastic. Kind of comedic, some bluegrass, some, they're just a neat thing. So Google them. We're excited that they're coming. We've gotten a lot of calls going. The Cleverly's are coming to E-Town, and it's free, absolutely. And then at 4:30-ish, we'll have the Mixers. They are the ultimate party band out of Louisville. Olivia Hinkin, who was on The Voice a long time ago, it seems like, but she's really not that old. She headlines that, and they play music that everybody knows and loves, and they're one of our favorites. We have them, you know, we've had them several times at dinner at our events, and they always bring a party, and that's what we like. But the headliner is Montgomery Gentry featuring Eddie Montgomery. Lots of great songs. Our town, something to be proud of. I mean, the songs are just, they're just great. So all free. Bring your bag chair. It is festival-style seating. Bring an appetite, come thirsty, and we hope to see everybody there. No coolers. You all would bring coolers anyway. But we're excited. Like I said, it's supposed to be 78 and sunny, kinda overcast a little bit. No rain. It'll be perfect for the festival. Perfect, so.
Thanks for your work, ladies. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, first of all, I have something. I love the Cleverly, and I highly suggest that was a very exciting announcement when the cleverly's were in detail. So great, great job there.
May Micah happy.
Yes, very much. They're really good. The second thing is just a shout out to Central Harden's Girls Golf Team, the E-Town Girls Golf Team. The fifth region tournament was just hosted at E-Town Country Club, and both of the teams are advancing to state. So those were the two there.
That's school year just started. Wow. That's great.
That's why I was before his school colors.
Yeah, there you go.
So, and then the boys play tomorrow, so hopefully the weather works.
Very good. Anybody else? Then I need a motion in a second to adjourn, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. So we are adjourned from our special business meeting, and we'll transition into our work session agenda. And I would say you all do not have to stay for this if you want to. We are gonna start with an outdoor music venue progress report. Our friends Tim Mattingly from Congleton Hacker and Elizabeth Town's very own Paul Fifty are here to tell us what's going on at the outdoor concert venue.
All right. Hey, everybody. As Mayor said, I'm Tim Mattingly. I'm the project manager for the outdoor music venue project here in town. Kind of an update of what's been happening out there. This is actually a photo from about a month ago, and this is a photo from sometime last week. So as you can see... So, as you can see, there's been a lot of progress with earth moving and everything else. Also getting started over here with the foundations and some of the parking lots there in the stage area.
Hey, Tim, if you don't care, just with that big picture up, align that up for them, how, where the stage roughly will be sitting and how it'll be pointed and...
Sure. So, this kind of square that you can see right here, that's actually the stage structure. So, if you're standing where this truck is, looking that way, you're going to be looking out at the crowd. So, there's going to be a big crowd area, you know, lower bowl with seating and then an upper bowl with a lawn. And then everything kind of back on this side of the site is all parking. And there'll be an admin building, a concessions building, and then a restroom building as well, kind of separated from two spaces.
And lots of trees.
And lots of trees. Like, there's over 500 new native species trees going in this plotland here.
Too long ago, did he mean to?
Yeah, I messed it up now. There we go. So, just some more detailed facts. So, so far, they've moved about 60,000 cubic yards of dirt. In total, they're going to move about 250,000 cubic yards of dirt on this project. So, we've moved a lot so far, but there is a lot still to move. We did, unfortunately, very early on, notice that there were some sinkholes on the property. So, we've remediated two of the three sinkholes so far. We've got about a third of the footings ready to be poured for the stage structure. We're also getting started on our underground utilities and MEP. And our steel contractor is starting to mobilize all of the site. So, they've got a lot of work to do, as you will see in one of these slides. There's a pretty elaborate steel structure for the stage. So, a couple photos here. This is a photo of the mass excavation. This is actually in the stage area, so you can see there's quite a bit of dirt that came off of that area. And this is a photo actually of the sinkhole remediation, which was a pretty cool process. Basically, they injected ground into the ground, which kind of capped that sinkhole and prevents further, you know, erosion. These are some photos here of our foundation operations that really just kind of got started in the last week or so. So, a couple photos there, digging there and then the rebar over here. So, this is a rendering, or I guess a 3D model of the stage structure. So, one of the big things that we're working on right now is what we call bin coordination, which is building information modeling. So, basically, you know, the design teams come up with all these, you know, they draw everything in their own models. And then on larger scale projects or complex projects like this one, we'll take those models and kind of combine them all. And then we do what's called class detection to figure out where we're going to hit things in the field. Because those models aren't always coordinated very well. So, basically, it saves a lot of time in the field and takes a lot of money and go-back work and everything else. So, it's one of those things that you don't really see if you go out to the site, but it's a very important part of the process that we're working on. And these are just kind of some photos here. This is actually, these are both from this project. This is kind of an example here. So, you can see this is a piece of ductwork, this blue right here. This is a steel beam. And right there, that's a clash. So, you know, they'll go through, they'll identify those and they figure out what's the best way to move that to make it work. Another thing that we're using on this technology-wise is we're going to be using a lot of drone for, you know, planning and things like that. So, we've got a software. It's called Drone Deploy, and I'll bring up kind of an example of it if it will load quickly. And you'll actually see, this is a survey that we did last week of the site. And I will move that away so everybody can come and see here in just a second. But you can see this actually takes and it will fly a grid over the project and then it stitches all those photos together and creates this kind of 3D model of the site. And so, we're going to do this probably weekly or bi-weekly. And it's, you know, pretty helpful as far as planning and, you know, like I can go in here in this software and figure out how much dirt is in that dirt pile and different things like that. So, on a site of this size, one thing that really gets lost, and it's almost been a struggle for us even for the last couple of months, you go out there and you've just got this big open area. It's hard to tell where things are at and, you know, where's the building going to be or a road. And so, having this, we can overlay all that onto here and it really helps with that, you know, planning aspect. So, as we go forward through this, you know, I'll always make sure that we have an updated version of this. And as we come in and present, that way you guys can kind of see what is actually going on out there. And that is really about all I have for today. Me and Jason were actually kind of talking about it beforehand. It's kind of, you know, we're still in the early stages out there, but things are really about to start taking off. You know, once we get these foundations going, we've got our block mason, we've started talking to them. They'll probably be getting out there here in the next month or so. So, you know, should start seeing some things go vertical here soon. Any questions?
I was hoping you were going to make Paul say something, but I guess...
Yeah, I got nothing else, but yeah, we're really excited to get this project going and to bring this amphitheater to the, to the area of E-Town is, you know, for me, it's personally pretty cool to be a part of this, but we're excited to bring it here and bring some more, you know, activity to E-Town. Keep it going.
More than anything, we appreciate the communication that you all have with our folks and the update's great. And we helped to get several more. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Well, I'll let you.
Okay. Next up is our friend Scott Heath from Magnolia River Services. And he's going to talk to us about our gas rates study. Scott, how long have you and your dad and family been involved with consulting for the city of Elizabeth Town?
At least 50 years. At least 50 years, yeah. So, Scott Heath with Magnolia River. I believe this is the first project that Magnolia River Services has done for Elizabeth Town. But that's only because I was with Heath and Associates for 37 years. And my dad worked back here in the 60s as your, as a gas consultant. Heath and Associates sold most of our business to Magnolia River in April. And all of our office went to Magnolia River. I'm a full-time employee there. We still retain, Heath and Associates is still in business, and we do gas purchasing assistance, which you're one of our long-term customers. We've been doing that at least since the 80s. My brother Brian and Scott Gaddis works with you on that. And from Magnolia River and from Heath and Associates, I wanted to say thank you for your ongoing patronage and our good relationship we've had over the years. For some of you that don't know our history with Heath and Associates, we served, we were in business for 64 years, serving exclusively the natural gas industry. Over 50 years for Elizabeth Town. We've done a lot of rate studies, feasibility studies, capital spending studies. Worked for over 60 natural gas utilities, most of them municipally owned. Designed over 1,300 miles of pipe in the southeast. We do a lot of regulatory compliance work. Your operation and maintenance plan, it was written by us. And we're well-known in the industry. So, we've done this for quite a while. Specifically, as it pertains to rate studies, we did a cost-to-service study for the city's gas system in 1998 and in 2009. I did both of those. My dad probably did some prior to that. But we've also helped in between some of those years, just to make some other rate adjustments as needed. The last time your rates were changed, and when I say rates, I'm talking about your base rate component, was 2012. And so, you take a base rate and you add the cost of gas to it as a pass-through. And that cost of gas changes every month, but the base rates haven't been changed since 2012. And when I refer to a cost-to-service study, I want to give you just a little bit of a background. It's a technical study and I don't want to lose anybody. I don't want to get too deep in the weeds here. But I think it's kind of important for you to know what we did, kind of how we did it. So, we sent a data request. It was extensive and both finance and gas system responded to it. We looked at several years of financial and operational performance. Looked at the line item budgets and your budget forecast, read your audits. We went through your gas supply every invoice for the last year, made sure, because that's your biggest expense. We want to make sure we're modeling that correctly. And we developed operating and statistics and usage for each category of customer and correlated that to the weather. And then the next one, they're assigning operating expenses to the rate categories. That's a pretty big task in itself. And that is not a hard science. That's not, there's some subjectivity to that. And so, what we've tried to do is to say what percentage of your operating is really attributable to the general customers, the heat rate customers, your interruptible customers. And as an example, and we use different metrics to do that. Sometimes we assign it based on the number of customers within those categories. Sometimes we assign it based on the sales volumes in those categories or the peak day requirements of those categories. And just as an example for that, every customer's got a meter. You send an employee out, read the meter, it comes back. You generate invoice, you put it in the mail, you collect the bill. So, those expenses like that, we allocated on a customer basis, right? So, the general and heat rate customers make up 99% of your customer base. And so, those particular expenses, we allocated those on a per customer basis. And then on a usage basis, on a sales basis, you know, your cost of gas, your incremental cost of gas, for every MCF that you sold, you bought. And so, that's allocated on a usage, on a sales basis. Things like your city gate station or major regulator stations that are really capacity-related, we allocated the majority of that on a sales basis. So, we have an idea. We've helped systems operate for years. And so, we kind of know where, what those costs are for, and we allocate it. And if you've got a different rate consultant, they may allocate it a little bit differently, but they all use the same type of guidelines. And so, that was part of what we did. And then we've got a rate model, and it's a pretty advanced Excel spreadsheet. And we can model number of customers, the usage for different weather scenarios. And then when we start changing the rates, we can match it back to your cost-to-service to try and... When you say that your rates are cost-to-service based, what that means is if the general rate customers are responsible for 50% of the cost, then you'd like to kind of recover 50% of the revenues through the same class. So, you don't have one class of customer subsidizing another class. So, we use the model to run some scenarios and design the rates. Then we took a look at where your rates were or are now and where we recommend that they go relative to your neighboring systems, the other gas systems in this part of the state, just to see competitiveness. We looked at where they were for industrials, for alternate fuels. Unfortunately, gas prices are well below alternate fuels, so you're not finding much pressure on that. And then we developed, you know, our recommendation for the rates. So, that's really, I'll be glad to answer questions about the in the woods part of that if you want. But I just thought we'd go through the executive summary and, you know, go through the findings and then the recommendations. So, like I said, the last cost-to-service study that you did, it was in 2009. And I believe there wasn't immediate action taken on that, but there was, most of those recommendations were implemented in 2012. And like I said, your general and heat rate customer classifications, it's 99% of the customers, they only use 53% of the gas. So, your industrial interruptible customers, they use 46% of the gas. The gas system really hasn't grown. It's been very stable. And your number of customers is almost identical to where they were in 2009. And the industrial usage has been very steady as well. Your consumption characteristics for your customers relative to other gas systems is very typical. You use about the same amount per class for the weather. The last three years, what we looked at in depth, they were all warmer than normal, but they weren't real warm, between 2.5 and 12% warm. Like I said, your industrial customers' consumption has been amazingly constant. You've got a loss none accounted for that we put in the model. You've had some variation in it. Over the years, we assumed 2% for the model, which is pretty standard. And then you've got a method whereby the gas department looks at your invoices for the gas supply. And the incremental gas that you're buying used to be a little more, the purchasing used to be a little more simplistic. You've got a storage field, which is great because when your load goes up and down, you kind of use this storage field to balance things. But as time has gone on, you're making more mid-month purchases. And then you've also got a new contract with Peak for prepaid, and so it's coming in at a different level. We had a formula where we were trying to account for gas coming in and out of the storage facility, your storage facility. And all of that has changed. And the storage tracking was, what actually went on was really not representing the math very well. And so, we talked with Matthew and Ed and Jeff, and we've kind of come up with a new way to calculate the weighted average cost. It's going to be simpler and it's going to be more, much more in line with your actual cost. So, that was part of what we discovered and think that we can improve on as going forward. The cost of gas is your biggest expense. It's 55% of your budget. Probably would normally be a little bit more than that, but you've had some very high capital costs the last few years. And I'll come back to that. But for your gas supply, you've got capacity on Texas Gas that basically gives you the right to buy gas in Texas, Louisiana, and bring it to Elizabeth Town. You've got a contract with SEMA, who's a gas supplier. They actually sell you the gas that put in the pipeline. And then you've got a recently entered into a prepaid agreement with Peak. Your non-gas costs since 2009 have gone up significantly. So, in 2009, your operating budget, not counting your gas, was about $2.5 million. And in fiscal '24, it was about $4.2 million. And so, these capital costs of the last few years have made that 4.2 number a lot higher. You've used some funds to build a new gas and public works administrative building. That came, part of that came out of the gas budget. And then you've made some major improvements in your Cecilia storage field. And let me just tell you, every gas system in the country would die to have your Cecilia storage field. It's a great asset. It helps you keep prices down. It's a very good asset, and putting money into it and keeping it current is a good idea. But what's happened is these non-gas costs that are not getting passed through are going up. And your base rate, which was, is supposed to be recovering that, hasn't kept pace for. From 2020, fiscal '22 to fiscal '25, your budget was a deficit in cash flow between $2.5 and $3.2 million a year. So, you had monies in your fund balance and you were planning on taking it out. And you have taken it out, and actual cash flows for the last three years, they range from a deficit of $927,000 to a little over $3 million. The, so, I mean, that's not sustainable. That's, it's partially due to increased capital, but it's also due to your operating costs have gone up and your base rate hasn't. and your base rate hasn't. Your audit, I thought was particularly interesting. You've got an adjustment that you do for the inventory balance for the Cecilia storage field. And then you make another journal entry for pensions. And if you look at those, they vary by hundreds of thousands of dollars each year. And so it looks like your net position is going up and down, and really it's just a, I don't know about the pensions, they're both non-cash issues. But I found that rather interesting. Your rates are, were based on the cost of service format in two thousand and nine, and they're generally, they're generally structured like that. But because your non-cash, your non-gas costs have grown, and they've mainly grown to take care of the general and heat rate customers, and you're losing money, you're losing cash. So what's, the general and heat rate margin categories are not recovering what we consider to be the allocated cost. The hollow factor and the interruptible were basically a break even, maybe just a little bit over recovery, but basically a break even. And then, you know, the conclusion to that is, you know, your base rate's not adequate to recover the revenues you need. The last bullet point on the findings is when we did compare your rates to similar categories between general heat, hollow factor, and interruptible around your neighboring systems in Kentucky, your rates were the lowest of the ones we compared. And one reason they're the lowest is because you're not covering your costs. You're not recovering enough revenue. But even the recommendations, we're getting ready to recommend a sizable rate increase, even with the higher recommended rates, they're still going to be in the lower portion of rates around the state.
It jumps out if you live in one of those other areas, but they don't. I mean, it's always nice for us to say that our rates are still lower than Henderson's, but they don't live in Henderson, they really don't care.
That's fine. Like I say, we can, I can address anything. I know you guys have the studies on any of the technical exhibits. I'd be happy to talk to you about that. I figured you just want the bottom line. And they, Ed asked me to present several scenarios. And so this top line is a do-nothing scenario. And just kind of following that from left to right. If you, we, this is for a test year, okay? This is not any particular year. What we did is we took your twenty twenty-six budget and we added some inflation to it and looked at some of the one-off capital expenses and adjusted for that. And we kind of projected this to be a twenty twenty-eight budget. So if we set rates at a twenty twenty-eight budget, we're probably going to be a little bit high on the first year or two. And then if you waited five years to do another rate increase, you might be under-collecting on the next couple of years. And you don't have to do it that way. You could set rates for this year's budget and then just adjust them every year if you wanted to do that. But it's been, it's been your practice, it's been the city's practice to kind of go multiple years between rate adjustments. So we took that approach. And so you've got the top row, the facilities charges that are currently in place. There would be no increase, and then percentage increase. So then there's three scenarios. And one, the number one scenario there is where we would make recommendations to raise the rates so that your cash flow is a break even. And so that would be, I would think, a minimum adjustment because you can't just keep coming out of your fund balance with it. And so the way that we think that's the most appropriate way to do it, your facilities charges are way low to other gas companies. And like the facilities charge is the charge, whether you use gas or not, for each category for the month. The general and heat rate, six dollars, and we're recommending it go to ten. The high load factor is currently twenty-five, we recommend it go to forty. And the industrial is one twenty-five, we recommend it go to two hundred. And we're suggesting that that, regardless of the scenario one, two, or three, that you do the same, the same facilities charge adjustment for all of them. And then the base rate change, dollar per MCF is shown for each category there. And the last four columns there, that is the effective percentage that your customers are going to feel, okay? Between the raised facilities charge and the raised base rate. And that's the cost of gas. We've estimated the cost of gas for all the scenarios to be the same. So one relative to the other, the customers, the impact on the customer under this first scenario here, I don't know, is there, I don't know if there's a pointer on this or not, I'll just point. But the impact for the general customer would be twenty-eight percent. The heat rate customer, thirty-four percent. High load, twenty-two, and point eight for interruptible. Like I say, when we allocated these expenses, these categories were kind of, the interruptibles were pretty well carrying their own weight and where we were short were in these over here. And so scenario two is that you get back to even plus, and then you're at a plus two hundred and fifty thousand. And that would help you replenish some of your fund balance that you've drained the last few years. That would result in these increases and an increase of thirty percent for the general, thirty-seven percent for the heat customers, twenty-three percent for the high loads, and two point six for the interruptible.
What does that mean in the average bill? To the average customer, do you have that amount?
I do.
Because if you look at twenty-seven percent, that looks large, thirty percent looks large. But the dollar sense, because, what would that look like?
Yeah, so, so your general rate customers is a combination of residential and commercial. And they average a hundred and twenty-five MCF a year. And the heat rate customers are almost all residential, and they just have a furnace, right? They don't use gas for anything else. They only average eighty-two a year. And the fact, because the general rate customers have small commercial in there, the average use is higher than a typical residential. But if, for the typical general rate customer, the scenario number one, their rate would go up seventeen dollars and eighty cents a month. The middle one is nineteen dollars and thirty cents. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong category. The general rate goes up nineteen eighty for scenario one, twenty-one fifty for the scenario two, and twenty-three sixteen a month. That's, I mean, it'd be more in the winter than the summer, but that's where averages. And if you go down to the heat rate customer, it's seventeen dollars and eighty cents. The second scenario is nineteen thirty, and the third scenario is twenty dollars and eighty-seven cents. So really, for a typical residential, it's going to be about twenty dollars, about twenty dollars a month.
Okay, that's fair. And I think the public can understand that better.
Yeah, right. So we, I mean, Magnolia River would recommend, would lean towards this second scenario because I think you need, you need to get some more cash, because you've gone through a whole lot of your fund balance. So I think that would be a more, a better, to provide some funding for capital in the future. If you did the second scenario, this is an exhibit from the study. Here's your existing rates and there's your individual adjustments. And these are the same percentages as on the prior slide. If you look at where you are compared to neighboring systems, if you're on the heat rate, which would be a residential rate, the way all of these slides work, this is flattening, decreasing a little bit. And the reason this tails up is when you take your facilities charge and you average it in, when you're averaging ten dollars on the first eckotherm, it's ten dollars. But on the second eckotherm, it's only five dollars, which is right. So that's what, this is the impact of your facility charge. So if you're using five on the month, it would come up here, and that would be an all-in seven dollars. And same thing for all of this. Here's the ones that we compared to. So even though we're recommending a thirty-four percent rate increase in the rate for the heat customers, you're down here, this is Carrollton, who has a great industrial base and very high load factor. It's a lot easier for them to have lower rates than this for you. Anyway, your rates and their rates are very similar now. If you raise the rates to what we have projected, this heat rate is still below, still below all of your neighbors. Now, this is another slide that's a little subjective because you change yours every month. The investor owns will estimate theirs for three months, and then they'll make an adjustment in three months. And so on any snapshot, this could go up or down a bit, but this pretty much shows you the relationship. If you took your general rate to the residential rates, so if you had more than, more than just primary heat, then again, the black line is where you are, the dotted line, after the rate increase, you're still below most of the other systems. General rate for the commercial customer, same story here. The higher rate is still well below a lot of the others. Here's your high load factor rate, same story, and the interruptible rate. There's a couple, there's some other more competitive ones. But you're still, you're in the game, you're well, you're well below global gas, which is the ones that surround you. So that's a real quick, real quick run-through. I'll be glad to take any questions. I hope I didn't go too fast, but at the same time, I didn't want to, I didn't want to bore you with.
Within your scope or outside your scope, this question may be, was there any thought given as you looked at these rates to the opportunity to expand our customer base? Because for some reason, we've been flat, which is amazing to me, because I am a gas customer at my house and I love a gas heat. To, is there something that we're missing for the developers that will put gas in their system? Is there, to be able to broaden that base to help absorb this cost among more than our current base?
I, I found it very surprising that your, you had, your customer base hasn't grown. We haven't done a lot of, we haven't done a lot of work for you in the last few years. I'm not sure.
We didn't have the money, as you can see, but.
I'm not sure what opportunities that you might have missed or, or, I don't, I don't really know the answer to that question. The mayor said that you, your community is growing. And if it's growing, I don't know why your gas customers aren't growing also. Now apartments and multifamily structures, that's a hard sell. So if you're getting a lot of that, that's just a hard sell. The subdivisions, I don't know, I don't know why. We could, we could try and, you know, dive into that and see if we could help you with that. But I don't know why, most, most other systems are keeping pace with their population growth. And I, you know, I don't know, sometimes, and I don't know if this is your case or not, but sometimes investor-owned utilities are already up against your, and you may be growing, you may be expanding your city, but they're already there. I don't know how much of that's in play.
To me, I think it's just nobody's, nobody's doing that. There's not incentive, or we, we're not selling that benefit enough to developers and even the industrial base that we have here. We're continuing to grow with jobs. So to me, to still be flat, we're missing a boat somewhere. We have good product, product's not bad. Okay, so what is that? What is that other reason? Because we're not going to be able to keep pace even, even on a, if we take option three, we'll continue to do that. I think unless we develop more customers here, we're going to have a hard time running this as a utility.
Well, I mean, well, I think, you know, if you, if you raise your rates to that second scenario, you're still very competitive, right? So it, and your industrial base has, you've kept it, right? And so there's a lot of our customers, you know, when, when gas prices go up or things get tight, if they're, if they're, you know, they've got ten plants around the country and their rates are high, they go. But if they're here in Elizabeth Town and their rates are low, they're going to keep this plant, right? So, you know, you've been able to, you haven't lost any industrial load. I don't know why you haven't, and that's another recruitment thing. We do a lot of work in the Carolinas and anymore a company doesn't, a manufacturer doesn't come in to the state without his handout, like what property, tax incentives, all that are going to give me. And so, you know, that drives some of it. I don't know how competitive this county is with the other parts of the state. But that could, that could be, that might be some of the industrial recruitment. You may be getting out recruited by other counties. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
We're not out right now, that's for sure.
Anybody else? Thank you for making a trip from North Carolina.
Thank you, and we appreciate your patronage very much.
Okay, public comments again. We will not go close meeting today, so unless you all have something else you'd like to talk about, I need a motion and a second to adjourn. I know you're upset.
A little bit, motion though.
All in favor? Opposed, seeing none, motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you all.